...
That's Larry.
That's gotta be Larry, so.
Here you take it. That is gonna be.
Good morning. Good, how are you? Yeah, we're good, man. Tex in the builder. Sharon's not home in the mornings usually because she works, right? And so now she's walking around looking at stuff. So we, you know, we closed with him not getting a hundred percent done, so getting him back out is starting to get active. It wasn't that much, Sean's like, let's just be fine. I said, Chris, I caught you, you followed up. How you doing? About what? As well. He said nobody's saying anything about them doing that. Or there's been no issue. But they're doing this. What do you mean haven't done anything? I'm going pretty far and I don't want to have a No, but it was all way for that.
DA, remember that person's policy?
My buddy.
Brain or something.
Right, right.
Like I'm up in the next building.
Well, when, uh, yeah.
If everyone can sort of make their way to their seats, we'll get, we'll get this show on the road. Can you hear me, bud? Turn it up a little bit more. Mike? Hopefully everybody got coffee, donuts. You ever want a few more minutes to have a seat? Or they're gonna stand in the back and heckle. All right. Okay. All right, good morning, everyone. Thanks, thanks for being here. It's great to see everyone. In addition to the people that are here, a great crowd. We also have about fifteen people that have checked in on the streaming as well, so welcome everyone that's tuning in online. Now, tell me the truth, was it the King Donuts you heard about that caused you to be here? Or is it, I know really what it is, it's your passion. Can you, can you hear me? Oh, it's, oh, Richard. But it's really your passion and love and care for this, for this club, our club. And I see a lot of faces that I see at all these events and I see participating in all the events that we have and utilizing, utilizing our club, so thank you for being here. I know most of you, but for those that, that I don't know, my name's Larry Roy. And I'm honored to be your next president. I got big shoes to fill with Tom Sanders. But I'm excited to take on the role, so I've been a member since '09. My wife Rebecca, who's right here in the crowd, is my greatest supporter. We've lived in the neighborhood for four years. I've been treasurer for the past two years, so this is a natural progression, so it's a great day to be a member of Hunting Creek, as we all know. Who has it better than us? Nobody. That's the way I look at it. It's a, it's a great place. I want to start out by thanking Zeke, Lisa and Greg for setting this up, takes a lot of work and also putting it, putting the slides together for us for today's presentation. We're gonna have a lot of information to present and I promise we will get to Q and A and that's why Tom's here, because that's his favorite, favorite part of the agenda. So Tom's down there in the end, he'll be taking questions later. First thing I want to go through is just real quick, the agenda for today. No, actually, let me back up a little bit. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the fact that I think everyone knows what milestone we have coming up next year, right? This, we're in the sixty-four grill. As everyone knows, we're established in sixty-four, so sixty-year anniversary, we're in our seventh decade as a club. That's, that's a long time. And I promise we're, we're already starting to plan the celebration for next year. We're gonna have a big, a big party for everyone. Young and, young and, and experienced that have been here for a long time, so be on the lookout for that. And during those sixty years, many of you have been here for a while. We've experienced a lot of ups and downs, a lot of turbulent times, a lot of times where it seemed the challenges were insurmountable. But we weathered the storm. We got, we got through those times and it's really because of leadership, but it's mainly because of you all as members. It's the members of a club that really gets you through the challenging times. But really, the, the most important thing is all the memories everyone made here. I know when we had this celebration, there'll be a lot of pictures and a lot of reminiscing about all the great times that, that all of us have had here. It's truly a place where you make memories, make friends. It's a part of your life for sure. It's definitely a part of mine. I love this place and I have a passion for it. I know you all do, so I just want to thank you all for that and for all you all done as being members and making this club what it is. I do have an interesting chart here, I think y'all would enjoy seeing. If you look back at over the, the seven decades that we've been a club. Back in, we've got five members still, we still have five members that joined in the nineteen-sixties. Twenty-four that joined in the seventies, thirty-seven in the eighties, fifty-one in the nineties, seventy-one in the two thousands, a hundred and fifty-eight in the, in the two thousand teens and a hundred and fifty-seven in the, in the recent decade. That just sort of shows the, the breakdown of when people join, so we got a, a great mix of, of members from all those decades, but one, one thing that jumps out to me is the fact that we've had three hundred and fifteen members that have of members from all those decades. But one, one thing that jumps out to me is the fact that we've had three hundred and fifteen members that have joined within the last ten or twelve years. So that just tells us that, you know, as a club, we've got to continue growing and prospering and, and making this club better each and every year to, to attract new members as we go forward. So the agenda for today. Got a lot of stuff to talk about. I'll try to get to it quickly. I'm gonna introduce the, the board of directors. These people up here that are passionate and, and work for all of us on all behalf on the board. We'll talk about the state of the club and some of the two twenty twenty-two accomplishments. Talk a little bit about our, our vision for the future and some of the things that we have planned for twenty twenty-three. The next item would be the, the, our long-term capital plan. And then I want to talk a little bit about our partnership with Trune. And then lastly, member engagement and experience. And then we'll get into question answers. So introducing the board. So I'm not gonna go in any particular order here, but over here, we got Greg Stomp. Most of you know Greg. Greg is our newly elected treasurer, replaced in me. Greg and his wife Sharon just moved into the neighborhood, I guess, what, about a month ago. Greg's been leading a, a big, big accounting firm here in town. So he's gonna do a great job as treasurer. Next is Barb Bitter Clemens. Think everyone knows her and maybe many of you know, know her, her dad, Mr. Better, who was a member here for a long time. Barb is our social and entertainment chairman. And as I understand it, Mr. Bitter was also in that role. So the, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. And if you know Barb, we're gonna have a lot of fun. Because she is a planner and likes to have a lot of nice entertainment, social events. So welcome. Brian Claire, everybody knows Brian. This is his second go around. When he, when he got off the board last time, I thought he was retiring, but he has such a passion for this place. He had to come back. He's gonna be our house chair and he's, that's food, food and beverage in clubhouse, among other things. And he's already doing a great job. We've got a lot of things going on and food and beverage. We'll talk a little bit about, more about that later. He's got a great committee, a passionate committee. We're gonna definitely see some improvements in our food and beverage area. So thanks for coming back, Brian. He was also instrumental working on the previous board as we renovated clubhouse. He was, he was an important part of that. Jerry Lurch. Jerry is our golf chair and a perfect person for the role. She's, she's brought a lot of new and thoughtful ideas to, to that role and also on the board as a whole. She's got a great business mind and leadership background from her career and we're, we're glad Jerry's on the board as well. Ryan Aaron's is a neighbor, lives in neighborhood. He's our greens committee chair. And I think we all can attest to the fact that our golf course was probably in as good a shape as it's been in a long time by the end of the fall. And we're really looking forward to seeing what blooms out here in the spring. Over here, we got Paul Wells. He's a longtime member, a legacy member. His dad was a member here as well and he's our secretary. So he's wise and, and providing a lot of great input. Gant Jones. He's an architect. He, he's our pool and tennis chair and has young kids. His wife Sarah, they're at the pool a lot and he's made a big difference as well. He's also on, and I'll talk about it in a little bit, our long-term capital planning committee that we formed and established this year. He's been an integral part of that. Chris Puffer. Chris is our membership chair and that's an important part. We'll talk more about that. We don't, we don't prosper and succeed without bringing in new members. And he's gonna be working with Lisa Wade, who we're glad has rejoined our, our, our team here and is back home where she belongs. So they'll be working closely together as well as Trune. John Caram. Our newest member of the club. Almost fifty years, right? Well, we're glad to have John. John serves as the experienced member liaison, which is basically looking out after the membership group. Experienced members and everyone knows he's got a lot of thoughts and ideas, right? So, and I haven't known John except for recently and got to know him and he's gonna be a great addition. One person that isn't here is Victoria Aaron. She, she's out of town at, at a, a family wedding. Victoria is our junior representative. And she's already made an impact as well. So we got a tremendous board, a passionate board that they're working, you know, they don't get paid much, but they're, they're certainly, you're getting your, more than your money's worth out of these guys. So anyway, I look forward to working with them. Let's talk a little bit about the state of the club. I'm pleased to report that the club is in, in great shape. Over the last five years, as we talked about at previous meetings, we've come a long way with clubhouse renovation. It's tremendous. We've got solid membership, which I'll show you here in a minute. We've got, in my view, the best golf course in the city, maybe in the state. Exceptional leadership team, Z Greg and the rest of the staff. We couldn't be more fortunate to have that team. Got a strong partnership with the leading hospitality and golf management company in the world in Trune. And most importantly, we've got great members like you all, as I mentioned earlier, and clubs aren't, in my view, people are members of clubs, yes, because of the facilities and amenities and the things that they can do here. But they're really members here because of the people and the members that they get to share those times with. That doesn't mean that, that we're satisfied, you know, where we are as a club. You know, it's all about continuous improvement. You're only as good as you, you are in, in a particular day. So we know that we got to continue making Hunting Creek the best club it can possibly be. And we're looking for opportunities each and every day. We're not gonna be perfect. But we're certainly gonna keep on improving. It's really all about a journey, not a destination. We're, we're gonna keep striving for excellence. Now, I have a saying and, and when I was in businesses, we're better than we used to be, but not as good as we're gonna be. And I think you can hold us to that. So anyway, let's get through a few charts just to show you a little bit about the membership growth that we've experienced. And I know these are eye charts, so I'll, I'll read some of this stuff off. This is a five-year chart. If you go back to two thousand eighteen, as many of you know, we were basically giving memberships away. We were asking people to to just come in and start paying dues. That's where we were as a club at that point in time. And as everyone knows now, our full membership is fifteen thousand dollar initiation fee. So we've come a long way. But if you look at this, we're gonna have attrition every year. This, it's just inevitable. There's gonna be people that move. There's gonna be people that feel like they don't use the club for various reasons and they, and they, and they leave. There's unfortunately gonna be deaths. So we're gonna have probably thirty-five to forty attrition every year. So we have to continue to grow and improve to attract new members and retain the members that we have. So over the last several years, you can see here that in twenty twenty, of course, we're getting into all this COVID stuff. Of course, the clubhouse was being renovated. We had sixty-three new members in, no, let's see, seventy-three. I'm sorry, twenty-seven new members in twenty twenty. That, that was the time when we started, you know, we're starting to do the renovation. We had quite a few attrition that year because of the fact that we had the assessment. So a lot of people left. So sometimes when you're trying to improve and trying to grow, you had to take a couple steps back and, or a step back and then a step forward. Then you see what happened the next year. Once we did the renovation and, and started, people started seeing what we're doing. We had eighty new members in twenty twenty-one with only thirty-eight attrition. So we had forty-two net new members. So starting to grow our membership quite strongly in twenty twenty-one. And then this past year, we had fifty-two new members and we did have quite a bit of attrition, but we still gained nine. So overall, you're seeing our, our numbers grow and that's really a testament to the, the improvements we've made in the club and our facilities and our services and just the club we are. The next chart is just the membership levels. As you can see here, we've grown quite a bit since twenty nineteen. So right now, we're at if you go back several years, I mean, we, we were in trouble, you know. Dues are obviously what keeps us going financially and we were struggling. But now we're, we're up to five hundred and four total, total members. And as everyone knows, we were bumping real close to the full golf membership. We're up, we're up, we were close to, I think we got to three twenty-five, which is full golf. We're at about three sixteen.